Good evening, good evening, welcome to our powerful living Bible study session. On this evening, the title is things that need to be remembered. Things that needs to be remember. We're gonna go before the throne of grace that God we come before you this evening first saying thank you there God. Thank you for your grace, your mercy, your strength that God, your peace, your love, your joy. We thank you that God for the Holy Spirit that you left with us to be a comforter that God. We pray over this lesson that God that we would have open minds and open hearts that God. Help us to hear your interpretation of the lesson that God. Give us a godly perspective that God. That God, we pray that we would retain the information that God. And not only be heres, but doers of your word that God. And also be willing to be gracious to assist others that God so that we may also be kingdom builders in the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen. We are going to the background reading, starting at Exodus twenty verse eight. Is there anyone wanting to read that? Exodus twenty verse eight.
Remember the Sabbath day to keep it holy.
Thinking about things that need to be remembered, what does that verse say to us? Remember the Sabbath day, keep it holy. Shirley said they put God first.
It's like to stop the everyday activities and focus on him because when I was reading one commentary says that God made, um, did all what he had to do. Six days and the seventh day he rest. And then it reminded me of when we were growing up. We can go outside and shoot marbles on Sunday, we can wash on Sunday, we can do nothing on Sunday because they really had all of this. And I said, boy, look, compared then and now, look what I'm doing.
Definitely, um, things that uh, just remembering to take some time for rest physically. Yeah. And then also spiritually making sure uh, we make time for him as well. Uh, he is concerned about the spirit man and the physical man. And making sure like the verse said, we honor him. And what we're doing and he, if, if we're not taking care of ourselves, we're not honoring, honoring him. So making sure we do that.
Yeah, uh, it did, it did say honor him with rest and I was just telling my Shirley yesterday, I said, we uh, we're talking about on Sundays. Sunday normally we go to church and eat and then rest and then like sometimes you have visitation to the hospital. So I would say, I prefer to visit on Saturday because when I go to church and go and eat, I'm in my bed. But at least I just get my rest on Sunday, even still now.
Yeah, and one commentary said he didn't, he wasn't tired, but it's just a reflective part of just in your Christian journey. Taking that time for rest spiritually, rest physically and making sure we rest in him. If no one else, we can go on to Deuteronomy nine and seven. Deuteronomy nine and seven.
Remember and forget not how thou provoked the Lord thy God to the wrath in the wilderness from the day that thou didst depart out of the land of Egypt until you came into this place. You have been rebellious against the Lord. I think we ought to read through uh, six. Does understand therefore that the Lord thy God giveth thee not this good land to possess it for thy righteousness. Before thou art, for thou art a stiffeneth people. That's when he was just bringing the people out of Egypt and then all they do is, all I've done is complain.
The children of Israel seen so many miracles, yet whine the most. Crazy, but we can't judge them because we do the same thing. We can't judge them, we can't judge others. Everyone has their process in God. And for some reason, because we were born in sin, that's what we go to. Like you did this, I want more, I want more, I want more, just like kids, I want more. Instead of reflecting, take that time to rest, this is all you've done for me. So whatever it is, if I trust you, it, it's gonna be okay. If I have hope in you, it's gonna be okay. And the one of the words used in that scripture is rebellious and we don't want to see ourselves as being rebellious, but if we're not following his commands, we're being rebellious. If we're neglecting to pray and read the Bible, we're being rebellious. That's what he asks us to do. If we're making personal desires a priority and not his desires for our life, we're being rebellious. If we're allowing emotions to dictate decisions, and that's a biggie. Especially for me, it's, it's like been a emotional roller coaster. But the physical is fighting with the spiritual because the, the physical wanted, want to do what it wants to do, want to react the way he wants to react. It want to take matters in its own hand and the spirit man is like, no, rest in God. Prayer does work, it does change things. If, if you talk about having faith in him, now is the time to act it out. And that's hard for the flesh to do. The flesh want, I need results now. The spirit man is like, no, wait in him. He is, I am that I am. You, you talk about it, you sing about it, you speak about, now it's time to act upon it and, and that's hard. But things that we need to remember, make sure we don't have a rebellious spirit towards God because it's so easy for us to judge other people and be like, they know better, they know what to do with us, right? But what should we be doing that we aren't doing? Anyone else on Deuteronomy nine and seven? If not, we're gonna move on to Psalm one hundred and nineteen verse sixteen. Psalm one nineteen verse sixteen.
I will delight.
Yeah.
Yeah. I will delight myself in your statues. I will not forget your word.
Anyone, what's that verse telling us?
I will delight myself in things. Be grateful. Glory in my household.
Delight yourself in the things of God. Mm-hmm. Don't forget his word. And one of the ways to not forget it is to make sure you, you're in it. Make sure you're attending uh, uh, things like Bible study, make sure we're applying, we're not only being heras. But we're being doers of it. That's a big thing with us on a whole, with everything. Is we'll read about something, we'll uh, listen to a sermon, but after that, that's it. So it's important to make sure, like the scripture says, we delight ourselves in it. We, we take the time to make sure it sings in. It would, if, if it means repeating it, meditating on it, making sure whatever works for us, because everyone has their own process on what sticks. Wouldn't make sense. Some people need to actually watch a video about the scripture for it to, to resonate with them. Some people just, I need to, that scripture, I need to put it on a sticky note, put it on the mirror. And if I read it, it, it'll stay with me, whatever it is that works for you. Audio Bible, I know uh, Minister Stefan, he loves audio Bible and he has to dramatize version of it. And he loves it. If that works better for you, do what works better for you, but make sure there is some way that you are taking in his word. Because if we're not filling our spirit man with his word, the enemy sure is trying to make sure you have his word, which is not the truth. It is not the truth. So make sure you're filling yourself with the, the promises of God, how, how he sees you. Because sometimes how we see ourselves, don't even compare the way, to the way he sees us. And we need to make sure we keep that to the forefront. Anyone else on Psalm one nineteen verse sixteen?
A joyful commitment to the word of God.
Joyful commitment, very true. And that comes with how you apply it to your life. Like I said, um, Minister Jackson, he does the audio Bible. Someone else may just like a certain type of Bible.
Yeah.
That makes it better for them to understand, to help you enjoy, to make sure you're getting that. But you can't just say, I don't get it and that's it. We don't do that with everything else. We make sure, if it, it was our job, we make sure we figure it out to make it work for our household. Because we need that income. We need that income spiritually as well. Because the other income, we, something may happen and if we don't have that spiritual investment, your mind is gone. So we need to make sure uh, spiritually, we're investing in ourselves.
To say uh, that um, uh, we had this in Sunday School lesson. Uh, his precepts, bless his commandments.
Mm-hmm.
And there's also like rules that we follow to make our life a better life.
Mm-hmm.
And so, and it says, I will delight myself in thy statutes. So when you find out that God's statues, if you follow his commandments and you follow his precepts and you follow the guidance, the scriptural uh, discipline, if you follow that, it makes your life better.
It sure does.
And, and when you start to realize that it makes your life better. And you know how like me, I have to go through, I had to hit my head about three or four times. And then I was like, well, let me try it your way, Lord. Okay. But, but you know, uh, once you find out that the, that if you study the scripture, now you gotta study the scripture now. Because um, when the Lord gets ready to work with you, he brings scripture to mind. When you get ready to go over here and jump on soup because she said something crazy to you, then you say, no, Lord, uh, I can't, because a scripture will come to mind. I'm not saying for everybody.
Yeah.
But once you start learning those scriptures and applying to your life, then it's like it guides you and it teaches you. And that's why it becomes a living word.
Very true. And I'll be the first to say, sometimes it don't even make sense, but please do whatever he asks you to do. It's not supposed to always make sense to you. Because if you think like him, you don't need him. So whatever he's acting, there's, his mind is so vast. You don't see how it's gonna benefit you until after it benefits you. So you, you're not gonna always get it, but just do it, just like Nike, just do it. Anyone else on that scripture? If not, let's go to Psalm one nineteen verse one fifty-three.
Consider my affliction and deliver me, for I do not forget your law.
Anyone, what's that saying? Any Bible scholars on who is saying this particular scripture? David. Uh, the man that has a heart after God's very own heart. This is him praying to God. Consider what I am going through and rescue me because I remember what you said. I remember what you said and what you told me to do. Please help me, Lord, please help me, Lord. And we have different prayers that we can utter to God. Um, we talked about some of them in the last Bible study lesson. Hannah prayed for a son and promised to dedicate him to God's service. Hezekiah pleaded for an extension on his life after receiving a death sentence. Elijah prayed for drought and then he prayed for rain. So we can show God's magnificent power. So there is no prayer that you cannot utter to God. As long as it's coming from a place of, I know you're higher, even if it's you saying, I am upset that you allowed this to happen. So if you're coming from a place of reverence, like I know, I know you're above me, but I ju, I just need help and understanding this. I need, I need your help to, I don't, I'm not worth your deliverance, but Lord, please. Be open with him about whatever it is. There's nothing too small, there's nothing too big. We should pray about everything. He does not care what it is. He wants to prove himself to us. He lives to do that. And the trick of the enemy will have us to think he's not near because of how I grew up. What I've done, the guilt and the shame, that's what the enemy feeds off of. He wants to keep you feeling that way. So you feel like, I can't go to church, I can't lift up my hands like everyone else, I can't sing. It's not because of who you are and what you've done that you're able to do these things, it's because of what Jesus Christ did. That's a price you could never pay. None of us could ever pay that price. He paid it because of that very purpose. So you are free to worship. As long as you're doing it to say, God, I want, I want better for my life. Don't be like the Israelites and keep bumping your head like uh, sister Betty talked about on the same thing. No, make that decision, I do want better. And follow it up with the things that's gonna make it better. Where, are we gonna be perfect when we decide to do that? Of course not. Of course not. And that's the, that's the part that makes it so much more worth it. Because whatever the enemy is meant for bad, he can turn for your good. So you made a bad decision and you're thinking it's the end of the world, like my kids always think it is because of whatever is going on. It's, it is the end of the world, mom. No, it's not. No, it's not. You can learn, he can make you learn a lesson in anything that you face. He, he makes it worth it all. It's not like this happened to me and he cannot use this. No, that makes your testimony that much greater. The reach that you have on God's people is that much greater because now you have experience in this area. And, and by the grace of God, when you do come out of it, now you can help someone else come out of it. Their experience is not gonna be exactly the same, of course not. But there is power in going through. Which we're gonna read about it in the other scriptures. And we talked, we, we asked this question before, who in the Bible did not have a trial of tribulation that they needed God? In. Every story is filled with another dilemma. That's why it said, there's nothing new under the sun. Whatever we're facing, there's something similar in here about it. But we gotta be diligent to go in there and find it. And AI now makes it available. Just ask a question, but make sure still study the word to follow it up.
Oh, you saying so much. Ask the question.
Yes.
That's what I'm learning. Ask, you gotta ask God the right question to get the answer. Sometimes you gotta be specific. And then you said, there's nothing new under the sun. We just talked about that a few minutes ago. But when something happens, you might think it's new, but it's just, it's not, there's nothing new under the sun, it's just being revealed.
There you go.
It's been, it's been there all the time.
There you go.
You say, oh, I didn't know that, that my friend would do me like that. Yes, she would, because it was there all the time. He wasn't really paying attention.
That's, that's a tough pill to swallow too.
It is, but it's something like I tell, uh, I've, I've been telling a lot of her, it's tough for me to take. But I'll tell somebody else, a girl, you know, it, it, uh, everything look bad ain't bad. It was for you to know, but when I take it hard, when something.
It's easier, yeah, it's easier to tell someone else. You'll be alright, you gonna make it through, come on, get through this.
Well, I'm in the bed, I got to recover, I gotta take a nap. Got to digress.
Yes.
And then, um, I, I just know that affliction, and it says, uh, consider my affliction and deliver me. Sometimes we be uh, saying that the devil afflicted me with this problem. And sometimes it's not the devil, it's the Lord trying to straighten you out. Because when I was going through my divorce for five years, I'm a very rebellious person. Five years I suffered, cried every morning, dried my eyes, put on my clothes and went to work. And then it finally dawned on me, five o'clock in the shower. Um, I'll put two, I, I wanted my husband to love me, give me the love that I couldn't even give myself. So I'm putting all this pressure on him, he, he can't read my mind, he don't know, you know what I'm saying? And I got to thinking, wow, I was, I was hard.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so um, then when I learned that, I, I got to love Betty, charity begins at home. You love yourself and then maybe I can teach somebody else about uh, relationships. It's not, everything look bad ain't bad.
Very true.
So, but it took me all that time to realize that I was going in the wrong direction.
Very true, and we, we put people, we give people that standard to live up to and expect them to live up to that. When we should really be looking at God, he can really fulfill those shoes. That standard that you're wanting other people to live up to, that's what we need to put on him. He's wanting you to put that on him. And then the other thing is, we expect people to be such great communicators. We, we don't have a course in school. Like, it's so crazy, it, it really is needed, how to communicate to someone. Because we, we don't know how to, but the Holy Spirit is a great teacher. And you can't expect someone, something from someone, you're not even communicating with your heavenly father, the way you, you're supposed to. But you expect someone else to do it to you, you can't do it, but you need to, yeah, you should have known better. Did you tell me? I talked about it with someone else, you should have known. So God is like, did you tell me what, what, what exactly is happening? I am the great I am, but I need that relationship part. But before I can give you what you're needing, I need to make sure you can attain, retain it. Because I give it to you and then it's gone, like, you see, the children of Israel, like it's gone. What are you doing to make sure these things are remembered? What are we doing to make sure it's remembered?
You know, as sometimes we expect things from people that they just don't have in them, like you said, with the communication. They just don't have it in, so we're keep bumping our heads and mad over a situation. And they just don't even have it to give. And not that they wouldn't give it, they had it, but they just don't have it. And we run into the fact, or me and myself, run into the fact like, why don't you get it? And then you're the one that, you're the only one that suffer. Instead of like you said, going to God, and another thing I was thinking of when you do lose some other challenging times, everything that is subtracted. God always has a way of adding, like, it's not really a subtract, like, um, I was listening to something I said the other day. There's blessings in the subtraction. Because why, sometimes you think something is gone and you physically see that it's gone, but it gave you, you got so much peace. You have so much joy, though it's not really, you lost anything.
It's a perspective.
Um, I was looking at the word consider and I was thinking about David. David had a relationship with God. So he felt that he could go to God at any time for anything. Okay, so he's telling God, consider me, your servant, you know, and I'm asking you for healing of this affliction because I know you can. I put this in your hands, like everybody else was saying, you know, but like everybody said, uh, we oftentimes put things in people's hands that they can't handle. You know, but if we give it to God, if we say, Lord, I'm calling on you, I'm putting this at your feet. I know you can do something about it and trust that he will. Process is already done.
I have to say this too. I applied that once I learned that lesson about putting all this pressure on this other person to please me, that's the wrong thing to do, yeah. But I, I learned this, like my daughters. Uh, like when somebody treats you bad and you want to retaliate. Okay, why do you retaliate? They really haven't hurt you in any way, except maybe they treated you badly.
It's those emotions that really get you.
It is, but see, there's still, that's a, that's a, that's a physical man.
Yeah, the flash.
So you, then you have to, then you have to remember, we're, we're spiritual, we're humans.
Yeah.
Trying to become spiritual. And so, once you, you realize that, then you can turn that, that, you get over them feelings.
Yep.
You just have to continue on that, that spiritual path. And keep doing the right thing, regardless if somebody else is doing the wrong thing to you.
Very true.
And so, that's a, that's a, that's a problem I have, but working on.
We're work in progress, as long as we know what we're working on and we continue to work on it. And one thing that stuck out as well, David asked him to consider him, David didn't say, all this stuff I did, you ought to, no, come humbly. Come humbly. God, I, I need you right now. Please consider me. Please, please put me on, on your mind. When you, when you're blessed and please don't leave me out. Don't do it without me.
And you know, sometimes. Or sometimes, you know, when we feel like we can't go to him, it's because of that relationship that we don't have. So we're not spending time, I mean, you're not gonna go up to a complete stranger and say, can you give me something? You know, if you don't know him, but if you have You know, if you don't know him, but if you have a relationship with him, then David had that relationship. He didn't just pray in the good times or just in the bad times. He had that relationship, he had that. He knew he could go and trusted that his, whatever he asked was gonna be answered because of the relationship that they did have.
My friend helped me out. You know, like he's got his first.
Yeah.
Like I was saying, like Sister Betty was saying, don't be too quick to blame the devil. There are times you, for me, there are times I go to things, I examine myself. God rises up in me, so I examine myself, like I was sharing with her this morning. Something going on in my life now and I say, that's the worst I've ever been. And I said, I told her, I said, I examined myself and I know I went wrong. I had to repent early this morning when I was finishing prayer, I say, oh. Ain't nobody disrupting into me. God forgive me.
Very true, very true.
If I could, just one last, um, I think it's important. That it says in the sixteen verse, I will delight myself in your statutes, which are laws and commandments. And then, you know, with, I think it's important that he's reiterating, look, I follow your law. I'm in good standing with you. So please remember me. And it's not just. I have a relationship, I'm in good standing. Cause there's a lot of people. I know a lot of people. But I may not be in good standing with them or vice versa. Like, yeah, you know, I know them, but. You know, that's, that's Lil Johnny, I don't really fool with Lil Johnny, how you doing, you know, that kinda stuff. But not just communication, but saying, I'm in right relationship with you. I delight in your laws, I remember your laws, I, I follow everything that you have for me to do. So please remember me.
Very true. Psalm one nineteen, uh, verse one seventy-six.
I have gone astray like a lost sheep. Seek your servant, but I do not forget your commandments.
This time he admitted, he was like, I, I, I messed up. Father, I, I have messed up. Be honest, be honest. You can't hide from God. And go to another Bible scripture, Adam and Eve thought they could hide from God. You cannot hide from God. I don't know why we think that. The enemy has us so confused, he didn't see that, he didn't hear that. So I can't even talk about Adam and Eve because we do it too. It's like. No, there's nothing you can do that he doesn't see and know about. So just be like, yep, like Mother Adam said, I messed up. Father forgive me. I repent because I do not plan on doing it again. Remember to put those steps in place so you do not do it again.
Well, yes, we have to repent. That's very important. I repent. I say, Lord, if I have done anything against you, please forgive me. But that's in the Lord's prayer too.
That should be an everyday prayer.
Trespassers, we forgive those.
Yeah, whatever I've done that, cause sometimes we don't realize it. Because of tradition, because of the stuff we, uh, got caught up on because of who we have around us. You know, I, I didn't realize, I didn't know. That's what the Holy Spirit is there for. We don't know all things. Help me, Lord. The enemy would have us so focused on what someone else did, but. When you point the finger. How many, how many of them were pointed back? I've always said this, like anytime I've taken anything to God about what anyone has done. Ninety-nine point nine 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 percent of the time, he'll say, well, you could have done this differently. I wasn't expecting you to say that. You were supposed to get that, I'm not me. But it's like, it's always something we can improve on. And even if we have that self-reflection. It makes it so much easier to extend grace and mercy to someone else. Cause even Jesus said it on the cross, Father forgive them for they really don't realize what they're doing. Nah, had they realized, some people might have did it anyway, but some people would have been like, oh my gosh. Like the Pharisees and Sadducees, you had some of them, um, really intentfully thinking they were carrying out the work of God. And that's how we may get caught up too. Thinking, I, I'm doing what God's, are you really though? Are we really showing God's love in what we're doing? Or is it our emotions getting the best of us?
That's what I was gonna say, because a lot of times we think everything's an outward thing, but it starts in the heart and the mind. And, uh, we, we don't question our thoughts, we don't question our heart, you know? And then we move on it. And then after, after everything has happened, then, then you say, well, maybe I shouldn't have did that. You know, so we have to question the thoughts we have, the heart, you know, motives that we have. So that we can be in right standing with God. So we can do what he would call us to do because oftentimes our thoughts are not his thoughts and our ways are not his ways.
In a bad way. But that comes with being humble too. Being like God, I, I could have messed up. Did I mess up? But be in that place to be like, I don't know it all, I don't have it all. I could have really did something wrong.
That's why I love that story about Saul.
Which one?
The one where he thought he had it going on.
On the road to Damascus.
So self-righteous. Oh, he's doing the Lord's work. He's slashing and killing. Oh, he, he got some, I'mma round up all these Christians, yeah. And you see what happened to him. His pride, self-righteous religious pride. Thought made him think that he was, uh, doing the Lord's work. And the Lord said, no.
I ain't, I ain't got nothing to do with that. You're doing, you're doing some of his work, ain't my work. And when it's Hebrews thirteen and two.
Do not forget to entertain strangers. For by so doing, somehow unwittingly entertained angels.
And what do we think this scripture is talking about or how, how this scripture speak to us?
That's, that's like opening your home to traveling strangers, eh? And that stranger, like sometimes you look, you say, this is strange person, you don't know them, but guess what? You don't know who they are and why they're there, so be nice to everybody in other ways, you know?
Yeah, showing, showing hospitality, um, because if you do claim to be a Christian. You should be exemplifying Jesus. And there was no one that Jesus came in contact to that didn't feel his heart, he didn't show compassion to, no matter who they were. Even when the disciples thought, you don't need to be hanging around them. Who should I be hanging around? If I'm trying to give God to people, uh, is it only certain people that I should give God to? There's no certain people. Just show hospitality because you'd never know who is among you. And it talked about different instances in the Bible where Abraham. Came in contact with angels, didn't know it. Was it Lot that came in con, came, came in contact with angels who didn't know it? Making sure, like, I, I'm not, oh, you need food, mm-mm, mm, I don't know, I don't, I don't know you, I don't. If I have it, give it. Not because I don't know who you are, but. I'm, you're going through, you're my sister in Christ, you're my brother in Christ. And if I have it, definitely because if I was in your shoes. I would want someone to do the same for me. Yep. If no one else has anything on that, we can go on to the devotional reading, Deuteronomy six verses ten through fifteen. Deuteronomy six verses ten through fifteen.
And it shall be, when the Lord thy God shall have brought thee into the land which he was square. And to thy fathers, to Abraham, to Isaac. And Jacob, to give thee great and godly cities which thou buildest. And houses full of good things which thou fillth not, fillth not, and wells digged, which thou diggast not. Vineyards and olive trees which thou plantest not. When thou hast, thou shalt have eaten and be full. Then be aware lest you forget the Lord which brought thee forth out of the land of Egypt from the house of bondage. Thou shalt fear the Lord thy God and serve him. Thou shalt swear by his name. Ye shall not go after other gods, of gods of other, of the people which are around about you. For the Lord thy God is a jealous God among you lest the anger of the Lord thy God be kindled against thee. And destroy thee from, from off the face of the earth.
Okay. Anything that stuck out to anyone in those verses?
He was warning them about being disobedient, cautious against disobedience. He, remember when they were in Egypt and what they went through? So he was trying to remind them, you know, they were complaining and then what he did, and he sent Moses and Aaron. The road and all that and the plagues and all that, so he was just like, hey, cautioning them. Don't get back where you was before.
Very true.
I was thinking like Mother was saying, it's just, Jesus, once we pray to God and get our, but don't forget.
Don't forget, definitely.
Once you get to where he brought, cause he didn't have to and that, and this verse, I just gotta, after I done brought you out, you didn't plant a tree, you didn't build a house. You didn't do none, you walked into this inheritance, uh, this blessing, but don't forget. And just because you have different ones around you and they're doing this, that and the third, remember who gave you that. And don't, um, what they said, like, um, he says in the Bible, we all of this world but not conform to this one. Because they're around you, don't start doing what they're doing because you know what I've done for you.
Kind of way to remember.
It's not hard. We just tend to.
We, we make a lot of things that are very simple, very hard. And confusing.
I mean, if, if you, if you're living in this life. And you know that you, you didn't reach where you are without the help of God. Why is it hard to you, for you to remember where he brought you from? You know, because what I was thinking about as far as Israel is concerned, four hundred years you were in bondage. And you cried out to God for four hundred years, okay? And he brought you out of where he, where you were to give you freedom. He brought the bondage with you.
That, that's important.
Yeah, so you, then you're going back to what you, you know, what you saw and what you lived in. And he's telling you, you don't have to live that way no more. And but I can't let go, you know, so that's what I got.
Well, I was thinking about when, um, we were enslaved for four hundred years. If you think about it, our story is similar to the Israelites. And, uh, I can remember, I go back to my childhood when the whole neighborhood used to have an outdoor toilet. You would see clothes hanging on the line. You see, uh, people living in raggedy houses, having raggedy clothes and, uh, you know. You, you, we was poor. The street I lived on was called Arms House Road. Okay, it's just all black, we was all on the same level. But then as, and everybody was in church on Sunday praising the Lord, asking for better, asking for, you know, a new house, new car. Everybody was trying, was moving forward. This is the sixties. Then when you get into the seventies, people started driving Cadillacs, living in a, a nice three-bedroom, bedroom house. You got your kids going to private schools. And then, uh, it's like we, the more we progressed as a people, then the churches got empty. I remember when the deacon board used to sit over there full of men. Now you can't hardly. Well, we got a few. But I'm saying, families start breaking up. It's like the more we had, the more material things that we had. We, 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 we left God behind, we left the spiritual side back. And we didn't realize, we didn't put the two, the two, to, we didn't add up. That it was because of those prayers and getting on your knees and praying. That you got all this stuff that you now have and you, you say, well, you kick God to the curb. And now we can make it, now you see what's done happened to our children. You see what's happening to them. And it's like, we don't know how to stop it, but, I mean, I already know because I'm old fashioned. And, um, I ain't forgot, I ain't forgot what my parents taught me, you got to go back down on your knees. You know?
Things that need to be remembered. Make sure we're resting in him, keeping him first, make sure we're free from rebellion. Make sure to have a good standing relationship with him. Keep his statues, whatever he's asking us to do. And on that verse with obedience. Not doing what he is asking you to do is still disobedience. Because I didn't, I didn't do anything, but you didn't do what he asked you to do, so. Delayed obedience is disobedience. God, I gotta think about it. I already did the thinking for you. What is, what is there to think about? I done did all the calculations, I done went and got the victory. Now I'm telling you how to get to what I already set up for you. There's no thinking necessary. I did it for you. Just do what I asked you to do.
When you say the word. When you say obedience, that means I need to hear what God is telling me, right?
You need to get to a place where you can hear what he's saying.
Yeah, but I, I need you to tell me how do I get, I'm gonna tell you how I know. Okay, I'm getting to the place where I can, but a lot of people I know in here, they, they might don't know, maybe everybody knows, it's just me don't know, didn't know. How do you get to the place where you can hear God so that you can be obedient to him?
So there's, some people may hear audio, like an audible voice. Everyone's relationship with God, with God is different. So I can hear what God is saying to me by just simply reading the daily bread. Being in a Bible study and I, I heard someone say something that resonated with something I read earlier. And there's a confirmation that has to be, no one else knew that I was going through this situation and I was having. I'm thinking about, I have this big decision I wanna make. No one else knew, the fact that you confirmed something in my spirit. Someone, uh, someone, uh, watching a movie. And a situation happens in the movie, it's just being open to however he wants to speak to you. It don't, we tend to keep him in a box. Yeah, it, it, it's, this is the only way he can talk to me. No, I read a scripture twenty times. The twenty-first time and I'm going through this situation, oh my gosh, there is such a revelation. I have never put two and two together ever in my life. And now all of a sudden, it's like. Like the lights and everything is going off. He just does, he, he speak to Moses through a burning bush. He spoke through prophets, he has different avenues. He could speak to you through a song. You heard the song over and over this today, it's heavy on you. Oh my gosh, yes, Lord, I hear you. It, it's just so many ways he can talk to us, but we just can't close him off and say. That's not how he's talking to me. That's like that, 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 um, skit they talk about, there's someone stuck on, on water in a boat. And God, uh, and three, three different scenarios came by when they, oh no, that's not it. Because I'm so, I'm so focused on this is what, how he's going to do it. And he done showed up so many times and we done missed him. Cause I wasn't open and I wasn't aligned. The, the emotions, when I talk about them emotions, they fight back. But we have to realize, we have authority over the emotions. God didn't give authority to the emotions over us. He gave us authority over the emotions. So like David said, soul, I command you to worship. Nope, I'm not doing it today. Anger you have to leave in the name of Jesus. I'm not doing, I plead the blood over my mind. Nope, I'm not going back down that dark road. I know where it's gonna take me, I've been there before. So whatever I need to do to make sure I navigate, God, show me your word. Where in your word it talks about? Making sure I do what I need to do so that my, my mind does not go back there. I'm gonna stay focused on what you did. You've delivered me before, you showed up in my family before. What's stopping you from doing it again? The enemy would have you to think, no, he's not gonna do it. Why is he not gonna do it? If he came here to die for me, and if it was just for me, he would have died on that cross again. So why would he not show up again? If he's this big God, we talk about it all the time. If he's this big God, we talk about it all the time. But when it comes to our situation is no, he ain't gonna do, I gotta figure it. What? Why do you have to figure it out? You're so much smarter than God? It's the thought process that we got. Central verse, remember now thy Creator in the days of thy youth, while the evil days come not. Nor the years draw nigh when thou hast said, I have no pleasure in them. Ecclesiastes twelve and one. That's the King James Version. The New Living Translation says, don't let the excitement of youth cause you to forget your Creator. Honor him in your youth before you grow old and say, life is not pleasant anymore. And that's similar to what you were talking about Sister Betty, making sure there's a foundation. Honoring him is a staple in my life. So I've create like almost a tradition of doing it to make sure it's embedded in my family. And those are the things that we need to do in our families, in our personal lives. What am I doing in my routine to make sure he is a part of it? And I don't go a day without it because it'll start with a day, it'll grow into two days. Grow into two, and then you have those years where it's like, we forgot, like you said. It didn't just happen, I think was Elder Nixon that said it, it didn't just happen one day. It starts small and it grows. So we need to make sure we're starting small with whatever we need to do. To make sure we remember the things that need to be remembered, not how people hurt us. We put that on replay all the time and that doesn't get us anywhere. It doesn't get us anywhere. That's when hate is gonna start growing. Envy is gonna start growing. The things that he does not want to grow in us are gonna start growing. That's why he says, stay focused on me, stay focused on the good, don't focus on the bad. We have to abide by what he's saying.
I have to add to my story too.
It is not rateable.
I'm sorry. I, I mean, because, uh, uh, I mean, my parents taught me that, all that. And then when I was growing up, I was like, we go to church on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Okay, when I grow up. I ain't never going to church. And so that's what I did. And so, but it kept every now and then I go back. I could be urged and I go back or I be have a problem and I go back. And I was never consistent with my kids, never consistent. So now I get what I got. But I know that one thing that I do have is I know the power of prayer. And so when things go crazy and haywire, I know, I know now I can rest back. In that, that my focus stays on God. I know that God can handle anything. And then I'm not so worried about them being out here in this world.
But let's remember to make sure we don't wait till it's so chaotic and then we go to prayer. As soon as the enemy shows his hand, that's what he's been teaching me. Soon as you see them red flags, get to calling the name of Jesus over it. Don't wait to do it. Do it right away. Cause how much different our life would be if we start going to God when we need to go to him. But that comes with that good standing relationship.
Yes, yes, that's what I'm saying. I didn't have that relationship, so I did not know. That that's how you go to God like a eight, that's just why I tell, don't use God like a ATM machine. That's what I was doing. He was my ATM machine. Soon as I got back on my feet.
Yep.
I'm serious. So that's what we do.
This is why the things that need to be remembered need, there's needs to be something put in place to remember them.
So when she gets serious about it, once I got serious, then I ask the Lord, what should I do?
There you go.
And then that's when the guidance start, that's when the Holy Spirit, the Holy Spirit empowers everything and it guides us and teaches us where we. But we have to make up in my mind, our mind that we kind of get serious now. We ain't playing no more.
And I, then that's the answer to your question. How do I get to a place where I can hear from God, get serious about it? And the Holy Spirit will lead and guide you. I mean, you had the answer right, didn't you?
Okay, but I'm. That's my song. That's my song that you told me. It can come through a TV show. It can come through, uh, something.
That's why it's so important what we listen to and what we watch. That's why it's so, it, it feeds your spirit.
I got my answer from you.
The Holy Spirit. Yeah, there you go. He led and guided me to what to say to, there you go. So key terms nostalgic, longing for or thinking fondly of a pastime or condition. Someone who longs for a pastime or condition. Neurodegenerative relating to or marked by degeneration of nervous tissue. Cognitive of relating to or being conscious of mental activities such as thinking, reasoning. Remembering, imagining, learning words and using language. Introduction. To be able to have a good memory is an incredibly good gift from God. There are many people who are alive, but they cannot remember anything from day to day. There are some things that every believer needs to be able to remember. It is important that every believer remember that God made each of them, that they didn't make themselves. The believer needs to remember that it is in God that he moves and has his being. The believer has the right to praise God in the good times, but he also learns to praise God in the bad times. It's important that the believer learns to always remember God and allow his praises to go forth. Each day of his life. When the believer remembers the prayers that God has answered in his life. It gives him a deeper appreciation for a greater understanding of who God is. This causes the believer to have a greater hope, which leads to a greater maturity in his prayer life. What stuck out? What stuck out for us?
Remembering the prayers that God has answered for us.
Remember that, yes.
You know, because we, uh, oftentimes we, God gives us the answers to our prayer. And we're, you know, thank you at that moment, but then we go on and act like God hasn't done anything.
You have the right to praise him in good times and you should definitely praise him in the bad times. Cause that, that, that does something, it, it exalts him, makes, continues to make him bigger than the situation. And it serves the enemy notice that you're beneath me. So with one, I, one weapon that we're doing, we're multitasking.
And, um, not to, sometimes we could get carried away like when we look back and say he did it before and do it again. We want, wanna try to have a time period to say, it was about three months he did that for me. But he's not, you can't, you don't know how he's gonna do it this time. And then there's sometimes he allow you to, that's why, you know, we have to really. Like you said, relationship and say, God, what are you saying to me or why or look in your life? Because there are times he can allow something to prolong. For you to get to that place, you look at that relationship, you were seeking more. He wanna take you through something to give you a testimony, i- in order to excel you. So don't look for him to move the same way he did the last time. One thing I know, you did it before and you'll do it again. I don't know, know when and I don't know how, but one thing I guarantee you, God, you're gonna do it until then, I'll wait, I'll trust you. I'll seek you. Tell me to be content in you, you know? So these are the attitudes we need to have and be going through.
Now, like you were saying, things that we need to remember is that sometimes when we do get to that place. Where we have arrived, he has given us a blessing and we can't think back. Then we, sometimes God causes a situation, so this is the way I need you to seek me. I need you to come to me. He wants to have that relationship with us. He wants us to seek him. And so some things that happens isn't always a. You know, something bad, but it's like, I need you to come back to me. I need you to remember. I need to bring back to your remembrance who I am, you know?
I seen God work is like, sometime your affliction might be so that you'll return to God. Because when I was going through my bad times, I put, first thing I did was put on the cross. I really didn't know. I had little bits and pieces. But when you put on, when I put on the cross, I still didn't know who God was. But when you find out how God starts to, when you pray. And the answer to your prayer comes, it might not come when you want it, but it comes down the line. And then you have to have patience and you wait on it. And when it happens, you'd be like, woo, you know it was nobody but God that did it. And so to me, it's like lifting weights. You're getting stronger. So the next time something bad happens and it comes in your life and you feel like, you know, it's not coming. Uh, in a timely manner that you would say, you'll have the patience to wait on it because you know you seen God do it before.
Yeah. He showed up immediately for Daniel with Joseph. It took some time.
So like the one thing that I always say is like, um, I learned from the Bible. Is it doesn't happen when you want it to, it happens when God wants it to. And so I've learned to like respect that and, um, like. You know, when I went to God and asked him to, I told him I was tired of doing drugs. And I just balled and I cried and I just begged him. And the next day I didn't, I woke up, I ain't did nothing. And so now everybody in my life, like most people, like, oh, you're a Bible thumper, you're this, you're, you know, a holy roller. And it's like, because I'm showing my appreciation to God because he didn't have to do that for me. And he, and so. I have to know and learn and grow in my religion and what I believe in and what he believes. And so it's just, I think that's what we're going for. That's what I, I just thought my head to say.
Definitely.
I just wanted to say, that was beautiful. They call you a Bible thump, thumper. That was a compliment. That's good, but you know, the testimony you just gave and you saw what God did for you, nobody can take that away from you. So when they call you a Bible thumper, stick your chest out. Yeah, I'm a Bible thumper. That's right.
God will show your story. Just stick to the, to the, uh, they call it the. Bible, the word, okay? Don't, don't allow anybody, because a lot of times people say things to you to see if you'll fall. Just to please them. Okay, so you have to be careful when people come to you with negative stuff. You tell them it's all right. Cause one day you're gonna need him too.
Definitely. Remembrance mixed with wisdom requires God's input to think and to do what is right at all times. God lets the believer know that he is working on him daily. The believer remembers with gratitude how God supports him when he is going through extreme times. Paul sends a letter to the church at Philippi, expressing his gratitude for their support during his imprisonment. Believers must always remember those who have been kind to them and mindful of their hardships. So Paul told them that he was thankful for the love and care they gave him. Because it caused him to remember that Jesus Christ was yet faithful to him, even in the midst of his trying times. It is a wonderful feeling to have the ability to think and remember. This is a time when so many people are limited in their memories and cognitive abilities. They have diseases called dementia, which is a cognitive disorder and Alzheimer's. Which is a progressive neurodegenerative disease characterized by memory loss. The word of the Lord tells the believer that he will keep him in perfect peace, whose mind is stayed on him. Because he trusts the Lord, in the Lord, Isaiah twenty six and three. The believer trusts the Lord, trusts that the God heals all diseases and afflictions. And such trust is based upon the believer keeping their mind on the Lord. It is important to remember Jesus Christ when so many things are happening in the world around you. The Apostle Paul encouraged the young Timothy to always remember Jesus Christ and to keep his life centered on him. Paul knew that there would come dark times and if Timothy were not centered on Jesus Christ. His faith would become shaken and perhaps he would lose his way. So he encouraged Timothy, Timothy to remember, ponder and consider who Jesus was to him. So that he would never let a day go by without giving God praise. Timothy's memory would provide a picture of God's ever-present hand in his life. This would help him to remember the past triumphs and help him to navigate his current trials. And cling to God's steadfast love and faithfulness in his life. God wants every believer to remember where he has brought them from. For God is the one who brings the believer out of darkness into this marvelous light. He is the one who gives hope to the believer during the most trying times of their life. It's important for the believer to remember the birth of Christ. For it is a season that invites the believer to be nostalgic and think about love. Or the love that God has for his creation. It's a time for the Christmas story. For, there's a time that the Christmas story comes alive. And believers realize how God so loved us that he gave his only begotten son to a sinful world who could receive forgiveness. It is a time when believers can remember how important their lives are to Jesus. And it's a time for believers to remember that all have sinned and come short of the glory of God, Romans three and twenty four. God wants the believer to always remember what is important in his life. Salvation through Jesus Christ must be and must remain one of the top priorities in a believer's life. It must be the thing that matters most, whether the believer is going through a time of personal trial. Or a season of mass calamity. He must face his fears, anxieties and uncertainties head on. He must remember to recount the wonders of God during difficult times. This will cause him to remember God's work throughout history and remember him for today and always. What stuck out in the discussion?
Um, I just took it as, um, like who you surround yourself with is really like. How you grow your faith and it determines your life. Because if you're hanging with people that don't believe in God. Then you're, you know, apt to not believe in God or not read his scriptures or follow what the Bible says.
Yeah, very true. It's someone, someone is affecting the other person. Hopefully it's you and not the other way around, but that's very true. They're saying birds of a feather flock together. It's very true.
You know, what stood out to me was when it talks about different ones having amnesia and Alzheimer's. And I worked for many years with a TBI patient and couldn't remember the days of the week, couldn't tell you. But knew every Bible scripture. Her parents had taught her and raised her in that foundation. And she could pray and she knew scriptures and he could tell you, but couldn't tell you like a birthday or anything like that. And it's something how you can remember how God brings everything to your remembrance when it's needed. And that's just what I got from that, is you do have to remember there's certain things that you heard as your childhood that you didn't understand. Or it didn't apply to, or even things now that you didn't apply to you this week, but you heard it last week, but then a couple of months from then you'll have. Like, oh, because I had that. And it's like paying attention to everything. Like you said, in a movie, God can speak. And it's just knowing and recognizing and being aware and open and not putting him in this box that he's only gonna talk through the sky. Or if, if it rains and you bust open the sky, then I know it's you, you know? But that it's gonna come, it could be just a subtle, you know? And so that's the one thing that I got, got out of that was just remembering, it's Timothy's son, that helped him. That while he was yet imprisoned physically, that their letters and everything, he was free. He wasn't, and it just go back to remember how, what God has that and what he is doing.
Uh, I remember the same when you talked about that mother Stevenson, Pastor Stevenson's mom. Used to always say, if you don't need it now, put it on the shelf. So when you need it later, you could pull it down, apply it to your life.
Uh, but I, as, as Sister Sharon was speaking, I was thinking about how. A lot of us came up in church as children. And our Sunday school teachers taught us, you know, the Lord's prayer and, um. The Lord is my shepherd, things like that. Those are foundations to build on. And so, you know, I know that as a child growing up, I didn't know them. You know, where I could just quote them, but I had, I had something instilled. That I could keep within me. So, um, growing up, you know. Even though I was out there in the world doing what I thought I was big enough to do. But the Lord, but the Lord was always with me, you know, so. You know, it's just a foundation that God gives us as children growing up and we, and. That's a lot of what's going on in the world today. Children, uh, they don't have that foundation because they're not going to church.
Very true. Conclusion, each believer may be feeling the effects of record-breaking rates of inflation. As they buy groceries, household goods and, and fuel for their cars. The good news is that God's economy never goes into recession. He is and. He is and will always be a faithful provider, always providing protection and direction for the believer, regardless of the fear that the media tries to instill in their hearts. But know that the greater the sacrifice, the greater the blessing. The believer must remember, get salmoni and calvary. He must remember the great price that was paid for his liberty and remember that without the shedding of Jesus's blood, there would be no remission for sin. He must remember that Jesus died for his sins, giving him the right to eternal life. And as he has received Jesus into his life, he will live forever. I'm glad there's no recession in God's, in God's house. That's, that's the one thing that stuck out for me. Sometimes we compare the world to God like if we had a father that mistreated us. We sometimes put that on God and think because the, the person in our lives mistreated us, that's how God thinks about me. Like I have to do things to please people, so I have to do things to please God. When he's really after our heart and he knows our intent and he knows what we're going through. He knows what we face. He has that grace and mercy available for us, no matter what the situation is. But it's just, we just gotta turn to Him. And like we said, that relationship and making sure things are put in place so that we remember the things. We remember that the disciples went through and they were in prison. He said, you're gonna need to remember these things when you go through dark times. Not if you go through dark times. You are going to go through dark times. You need to make sure you remember this stuff. And, um, Jesus came to do good. The disciples did good, but they still were, people called them names. People laughed at them, called them crazy. But we see what happened with Jesus. He, he, his name is above all names now because he endured it. And like it said, the greater the sacrifice, the greater the blessing. Joseph had to go through what he had to go through. But in the end, his family was coming back. When they laughed at the dreams he told them about. His family was coming, I need, I need your help. And you're gonna have some people do that, come back, I need you. How did you make it through? How you made it through your situation? And then when I did what I did to you? It had to been God that kept you. So your life is going to be a walking testimony. The, the only Bible that some people would ever read. So you're not only remembering these things for you, but to be a witness to someone else as well. And that's how the kingdom works. You take our, take care of his business and he takes care of your business. Questions. What can a believer do to help himself remember God? What can you do to remember what he has done?
Reflect.
Reflect, yeah. Go back over, oh, you did this before. List, only you can list those things for yourself.
I think that goes back to that, on that seventh day or that, keeping that day, having that one day of just reflecting and worshiping and praying. And that keeps it at the forefront.
Very true. What does remembering Jesus do for the believer?
His faith, hope.
Yeah.
You know, knowing that, that regardless of whatever you're going through at that moment, because it does change.
It does.
That God is always with you regardless of what you're going through. He's, he's there. All you gotta do is, uh, make sure that you're, you're praying, that you're praising, that you're reading your scriptures, that you're giving him the time that he deserves, not time that you want to give him. The time that he deserves, you know, to keep that relationship going. Because that's just like you having, um, relationship with your children. You're going to, to give them time so that you, later on in years, they can reflect on, me and mom did this and me and dad did that, you know?
Definitely. So what happens when the believer forgets God?
A month.
He's stressed.
I think.
Trouble.
Definitely. What are some of the promises that the believer receives when he remembers God?
Peace.
That passes all understanding. Lord, don't we need it? Any other promises?
Love.
Yeah. He will be that faithful provider, always providing protection and direction, regardless of the fear that's going on.
Thing we remember that he gives us that assurance.
Yeah.
No matter what you, it gives you that, like you said, that faith and that belief. But it's something that confident, like something when you going through some, oh, I know I got this because God's got, you know, like you have that extra boost.
Definitely. Essential thought. If the believer remembers God, then God will remember him. Dear God, we come before you this evening for saying, thank you, dear God. Thank you for this lesson, dear God. We thank you, dear God, um, that the Holy Spirit will show us and lead us and guide us on how we are able to remember these things, dear God. We thank you, dear God, for a better memory this evening, dear God, on what we need to do to be closer to you, dear God. What we need to do while the enemy is on the attack, dear God. We thank you, dear God, on this evening, that even though the weapon may form, it shall not prosper, dear God. We pray a special prayer for healing, dear God, a special prayer for deliverance, a special prayer for breakthrough, dear God. We bind the enemy on every end, dear God. We thank you, dear God, for how you're about to show up in our lives, dear God, how you're about to blow our minds, dear God. And we thank you, dear God, that we won't forget to give you all the praise and all the glory and the honor that you would do. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray, and everyone says, amen.
I have a, have a, something I'd like to share. Daniel, the young man that was hit by the car.